Amin. Ganda, ganda pala.
Rules is right side, diba?
Asigurado. Oh. Eh, paano nag-ajon? O nag-suspendo? Siya nag-martilyo. Pintuan. Hahaha. Napaka-pindio naman niya ng puta.
So, na-call one more person and maybe I'll cancel. Tapos. Yes, ma'am.
Oh, puta mahimbingan tuloy.
The session is now called to order. May we ask everyone to please rise for the singing of the national anthem. Bayang magiliw, pero saan silang anan? Alam ng kuso sa tipit moy buhay. Lupang hiniram, duyan ka ng magiting. Sa manlulupin, kita pasisinil. Sa lalat at puntok sa simoy at sa labitong pagka. May nila ang tula at awit sa paglayang tinawagan. Ang isap ng wata at moy na kumpay narapikin. Ang pituwing na paraw niya kailan papay ang dilin. Lupa ng maraw ng walang itbang setang. Uyay lami sa tipit mo. Aming ligaya dapat may mahapin. At lamatay ng daring sayo. May request everyone to remain standing for a minute of prayer and meditation. Majority Leader.
Good afternoon, Mr. Speaker.
Afternoon.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we defer the roll call.
There is a motion to defer the call of the roll. Is there an objection? Hearing none. The motion is approved.
Likewise, Mr. Speaker, I move that we defer the approval of the journal.
There is a motion to defer the approval of the journal. Is there an objection? Hearing none. The motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we take up reference of business and first reading.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. The motion is approved. The Secretary General is so directed to read the bills and resolutions on first reading.
Reverence of Business, Bills on First Reading, House Bill 3027 requiring the use of Filipino sign language, Representative Sarate.
Public Info.
House Bill 3028 granting 50% discounts, Representative Sarate.
Social Services.
House Bill 3029 establishing the Housing and Emergency Shelter Act of Montoro.
Housing.
House Bill Number 3030 to 3032 providing for the establishment of testa training centers, Representative Vargas.
Higher and Technical Ed.
House Bill 3033 creating the National Eye Center, Representative Vargas.
Health.
House Bill 3034 declaring March 9th, Monday, every as national solo parent state, Representative Vargas.
Population.
House Bill 3035 establishing proper chimney terminals, Representative Roque.
Transportation.
House Bill 3036 amending Presidential Day 1869, Harry Roque.
Games.
House Bill 3037 providing for the safe access in fire emergencies, Representative Harry Roque.
Public Order.
House Bill 3038 Direct na DOH, Representative Harry Roque.
Health.
House Bill 3039 Direct na DOH, Representative Harry Roque.
Health.
House Bill 3040 prohibiting the manufacture, importation, sale, and use of incandescent light bulbs, Representative Harry Roque.
Energy.
House Bill 3041 requiring depth to develop a gun safety education program, Representative Harry Roque.
Basic Education Culture.
House Bill 3042 facilitating the development, demonstration, and implementation of technology, Representative Harry Roque.
Ecology.
House Bill 3043 prohibiting the sale of toys, Representative Harry Roque.
Welfare of Children.
House Bill 3044 establishing a drug rehabilitation center, Representative Malapitan.
Dangerous Drugs.
House Bill 3045 renaming Kai Tikling Antipolo Teresa Morong National Road, Representative Akop, and several others.
Public Works.
House Bill 3046 transporting the capital and seat of governments, Representative Akop, Rowan, Puna, and several others.
Revision of Laws.
House Bill 3047 renaming certain national roads, Representative Akop, Rowan, several others.
Public Works.
House Bill 3048 granting the President Executive Branch of Government Emergency Powers, Representative Cayetano.
Transportation.
House Bill 3049 creating the National Cancer Institute, Representative Tambunting.
Health.
House Bill 3050 providing for the special protection of children, Representative Tambunting.
Welfare of Children.
House Bill 3051 mandating the completion of the land acquisition and distribution, Representative Bakau, several others.
Agreeing Reform.
House Bill 3052 expanding the coverage and strengthening the powers of the NTC, Representative Viat Victor.
Information and Communication Technology.
House Bill 3053 prohibiting establishing structural reforms, Representative Viat Victor.
ICT.
House Bill 3054 providing for the installation of innovation and communications infrastructure, Representative Viat Victor.
ICT.
House Bill 3055 establishing the wireless internet access programs, Representative Viat Victor.
ICT.
House Bill 3056 institutionalizing the establishment of Filipino big data centers, Representative Viat Victor.
ICT.
House Bill 3057 creating the Innovation Council, Representative Viat Victor.
Trade in Industry.
House Bill 3058 addressing the worsening state of power industries, Representative Sarate.
Energy.
House Bill 3058-59 defining territorial jurisdictions, Representative Lampagos.
Public Works.
House Bill 3060 and 3061 increasing bed capacity, Representative Lampagos.
Health.
House Bill 3062 amending sections 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5 of Public Act 6686, Representative De Vera.
Appropriation.
House Bill 3063 establishing provincial fisheries and aquatic resources training but development product centers, Representative Marquez.
Aquaculture.
House Bill 3064 establishing the People's Broadcasting Corporation, Representative Almonte.
Government Enterprises and Committee on Public Information.
House Bill 3065 converting the provincial roads, Representative Rasol.
Public Works.
House Bill 3066 repealing prohibition for appointment of Nobel State University presidents, Representative Espina.
Higher Ed.
House Bill 3067 declaring that Tikau Burias Pass, Representative Gonzalez, several others.
Netress.
House Bill 3068 establishing the Public Assets Management Corporation.
Government Enterprises.
House Bill 3069 increasing the monthly minimum wage, Representative Saba.
Appropriation.
House Bill 3070 institutionalizing national school.
Basic Education.
House Bill 3071 providing supervisory penalties.
Revision of Laws.
House Bill 3072 increasing the bed capacity.
Health.
House Bill 3073 regulating the registration of motor vehicles.
Transportation.
House Bill 3074 defining the crime of robbery.
Justice.
House Bill 3075 establishing institutionalizing long-term cares.
Population.
House Bill 3076 providing national public outreach.
Health.
House Bill 3077 providing for the upgrading modernization.
Health.
House Bill 3078 providing civil service eligibility.
Civil Service.
House Bill 3079 ensuring the government specialty hospitals, Representative Castelo.
Health.
House Bill 3080 banning of funeral agents, Representative Castelo.
Health.
House Bill 3081 requiring CCTV owners, Representative Castelo.
Justice.
House Bill 3082 requiring every major business.
Public Order.
House Bill 3083 spying the Philippine disaster.
National Defense.
House Bill 3084 creating the Rail Regulatory Board.
Transportation.
House Bill 3085 creating the Health Management.
Government Reorg and Health.
House Bill 3086 authorized on the DBM.
Appropriation.
House Bill 3087 providing benefits.
Justice.
House Bill 3088 amending Presidential.
National Defense.
House Bill 3089 granting full government.
Health.
House Bill 3090 prohibiting private contractors.
Public Works.
House Bill 3091 banning imposition of spy dates.
Trade in Industry.
House Bill 3092 prescribing uniform qualifications.
Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 3093 creating the Department of Disaster Management.
Government Reorg, National Defense.
House Bill 3094 institutionalizing system of effective fund administration.
National Defense.
House Bill 3095 creating the Office of Information.
Trade.
House Bill 3096 amending pertinent provisions. House Bill 3097 overriding all MMD.
Metro Manila Development.
House Bill 3098 establishing reliable.
Public Order.
House Bill 3099 prescribing general ban.
Ecology.
House Bill 3100 exempting from taxation.
Ways and Means.
House Bill 3101 providing for the employment of nurses.
Health.
House Bill 3102 establishing small and medium enterprises.
Trade in Industry.
House Bill 3103 designating the month of November.
Trade in Industry.
House Bill 3104 providing magna carta for students.
Basic Ed and Higher Ed.
House Bill 3105 scaling up nutrition.
Committee on Health.
House Bill 3106 penalizing the imposition of no permit.
Higher Ed.
House Bill 3107 providing supervisory.
Revision of Laws.
House Bill 3108 strengthening the government.
Dangerous Drugs.
House Bill 3109 strengthening the sustainable sanitation program.
Health.
House Bill 3110 providing for comprehensive nursing.
Civil Service.
House Bill 3111 strengthening the Barangay Unit.
Local Government.
House Bill 3112 providing for responsive civil registration.
Justice.
House Bill 3113 creating two additional artsy branches.
Justice.
House Bill 3114 creating Philippine pound oil research.
Agriculture.
House Bill 3115 amending Republic Access 963.
Public Order, National Defense.
House Bill 3116 promoting cost-effective measures.
Transportation.
House Bill 3117 establishing credit.
Overseas Workers Affairs.
House Bill 3118 granting a franchise.
Legislative Franchises.
House Bill 3119 abolishing the collection of farmers' education fees.
Agriculture.
House Bill 3120 increasing the monthly pension.
Government Enterprises.
House Bill 3121, 3122 establishing fish ports.
Aquaculture.
House Bill 3123, 3126 converting certain roads.
Public Works.
House Bill 3127 lowering the optional retirement age.
Government Enterprises.
House Bill 3128 providing national folic acid awareness program.
Committee on Health.
House Bill 3129 requiring all public utility agencies.
Public Works.
House Bill 3130 regulating the production, quotation, sale of plastic bags.
Ecology.
House Bill 3131 providing pre-employment privileges.
Labor.
House Bill 3132 requiring every student.
Forestation.
House Bill 3133 direct the conversion of Sangli Point.
Economic Affairs, Trade.
House Bill 3134 supporting the production of Philippine dependent.
Public Information.
House Bill 3135 establishing on-site, in-city, near-city.
Housing.
House Bill 3136 providing for the construction.
Public Works.
House Bill 3137 to 3140 establishing testa training.
Higher Ed.
House Bill 3141 informing the public about additives.
Trade.
House Bill 3142 increasing the bed capacity.
Health.
House Bill 3143 declaring March 19th, every year.
Revision of Laws.
House Bill Numbers 3144, 3145 increasing bed capacities. Resolutions, House Resolution 238 calling on the government.
To the Committee on Housing and Urban Development.
House Resolution 239 calling the Committee on Housing and Urban Development.
Rules.
House Solution 240 calling for an investigation.
Rules.
House Solution 241 Direct na Committee on Welfare of Children.
Rules.
House Solution 242 Direct na Committee on Justice.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Solution 240 urging his excellency President Rodrigo Abdo.
Appropriations.
House Solution 244 urging the Committee on Health.
Rules.
House Solution 245 congratulating our Olympian athlete.
Rules.
House Solution 246 congratulating commending the Metro Bank Foundation.
Rules.
House Solution 247 Direct na Committee on Agriculture, Energy, and Other Property.
Rules.
House Solution 248 calling for the integration of all online agencies.
To the Special Committee on East Asian Growth Area.
House Solution 249 urging the NHA.
Housing.
House Solution 250 Direct na Committee on Officers' Workers Affairs.
Rules.
House Solution 251 commending Architect Roberto Lomé Bibista.
Foreign Affairs.
House Solution 252 Direct na Committee on Appropriations.
Rules.
House Solution 253 Requesting Committee on Local Government.
Rules.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we approve Journal Number 14 for the session August 23, 2016.
There is a motion for the approval of the journal. Is there any objection? Hearing none. Journal Number 14 dated August 23, 2016 is hereby approved.
Mr. Speaker, may we recognize the guests of the gentleman from Coop Natko, Honorable Anthony Bravo and Honorable Sabinyano Kanama. They are members of the Santoninho Multipurpose Cooperative of Barangay Bilibiliran Binangunan Rizalo.
May we ask the guests of our representatives from Coop Natko, magsitayo po tayo. Magandang araw po. Welcome po to the House of Representatives. Mabuhay po kayo. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open a Privilege R.
There is a motion to open or declare a Privilege R. Hearing no objection. The motion is approved and declares a Privilege R. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, first to speak is the distinguished gentleman from the Third District of Negroes Oriental, Representative Arnulfo Teves Jr. May he be recognized, Mr. Speaker.
The Honorable Representative Arnulfo A. Teves of the Third District of Negroes Oriental. Certainly, the better-looking Teves is recognized. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Good afternoon and good afternoon, everybody. I rise here again today because I'd like to help constituents not only of my district, but I think of the whole country. Napansin ko kasi sa mga hospitals, lalo na sa private hospital. I think they forgot their priority mandate, which is to save lives. It has always been happening that they don't do anything to the patient in the absence of a down payment. Isa pa, kailan lang, I had this experience, I think, two to three weeks ago. I was in one private hospital in Dumagate, Siliman University Medical Center, because my father was there. Somebody was asking for my help, one of our constituents who was confined at the Negroes Oriental Provincial Hospital. And if any of my constituents can call me directly, as they, almost all of them have my phone number. Anyway, this is what happened. This lady has been calling me, asking for my help so that she can secure blood for her 13-year-old child. I'm not sure if it was a son or a daughter who had dengue. At about 4 o'clock in the afternoon, the lady was telling me na 13,000 na lang daw 'yung platelet ng anak niya. So, I think A+ 'yung dugo, so mahirap kunin, no? Sabi ko siya, "Padalang kita ng pera," but still, she needed my help on securing donors. Hindi ko siya naasikaso kaagad, dahil inaasikaso ko pa 'yung papa ko na nasa hospital din. Nung gabi, nakahanap na siya ng donor. It so happened that there was no blood bag in the provincial hospital. I was already in the private hospital. I asked the private hospital if I could buy one blood bag or several blood bags to be used by the patient needing blood in the provincial hospital. Hindi daw pwede dahil taliwas daw sa protocols nila ng hospital. Sabi ko, "Pwede ba? Dalhin ko na lang dito 'yung donor. Kunan niyo ng dugo, ako magbabayad. Padala natin 'yung dugo sa provincial hospital." Again, ayaw pa rin nila pumayag. I got a little mad. I talked to some of the officers of the hospital. Buti na lang, classmate ko 'yung isa, nung elementary. Nakilala niya ako. Sabi niya, "Nakalimutan, natandaan mo pa ako. We were classmates." So, I asked her. She had to ask permission from her higher-ups. Tsaka sila pumayag, nakunan, nadalhin dun 'yung donor para kunan ang dugo para madala sa provincial hospital. So, it happened. Nakunan ang dugo, hinatid nung anak ko 'yung dugo sa provincial hospital. After a few days, nabuhay naman daw 'yung bata. But what I'm trying to drive at, I think we should remind our hospitals, public or private, that their primary mandate is to save lives and not to make money. Alam natin negosyo lahat 'yan, pero hindi natin dapat kalimutan na una 'yung pagsase-save ng buhay bago 'yung pagkita ng pera. I spoke to Representative Raul Del Mar a few days ago. He told me meron na tong batas na ginawa niya dati. One reason why I rise here today is I would like to send them a reminder, all the hospitals of the country, na hindi nila pwede pagbawalan, pagtanggap ng pasyente kung walang pera. Una 'yung tulong bago 'yung pera, because again, their primary mandate is to save lives. Secondarily na lang 'yung kumita sila ng pera. That's all, Mr. Speaker. Thank you very much.
Mr. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we refer the speech of the gentleman to the Committee on Rules.
Hearing no objection, the motion is approved. Majority Leader.
I move for suspension, Mr. Speaker.
Session is suspended. Session is resumed.
Mr. Speaker, the parliamentary status is that we are still in the privilege hour. However, I move that we suspend the privilege hour.
Is there any objection? Hearing none, the privilege hour is suspended. Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, may we recognize the guests of the distinguished lady from the 4th District of Bulacan, the Honorable Lina Bell Ruth Villarica. They are, first, the Mayor of Maykawayan City, Mayor Henry Villarica, with the Philippine Elementary School Principals Association, Samahan ng Kababaihan ng Maykawayan, Sur optimist International Maykawayan, and Sur optimist International of Maykawayan San Toninho.
The guests of the Honorable Lina Bell Ruth are Villarica of the 4th District of Bulacan, including the better half, please stand up. Welcome to the House of Representatives. Mabuhay po kayo lahat. The guests of the Chairman of the Committee on Foreign Affairs, the most bejeweled and richest congressperson. But not in the salon. Go ahead, the Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, now may we recognize the Honorable Lina Bell Ruth Villarica for her manifestation.
The Chairman of the Committee on Foreign Affairs, the Honorable Lina Bell Ruth Villarica of the 4th District of Bulacan has the floor. You are recognized, madam.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Good afternoon. Mr. Speaker, I would like to make a manifestation regarding the recent election of the new set of officers of the Association of Women Legislators Foundation Incorporated. We took our oath of office just this morning by no less than our Honorable Speaker Pantaleon Alvarez. Registered with the SEC as a foundation on August 26, 2011, the association was first organized way back five congresses ago by then Representative and now Senator Cynthia Villar. Called then the Association of Lady Legislators, it rose to become a permanent political bloc in the House of Representatives under the leadership of Representative Gina de Venesia of the 4th District of Pangasinan in the 15th and 16th Congress. Since then, Room 219 at the South Wing has been assigned to us for the organization's use. It was last August 6, August 9, 2016, that this humble representation was elected as president by the association composed of 87 women solens of the House of Representatives during its first general assembly. Thirty-one of its members were elected to various positions. At the screen are the officers, the name of all the new set of officers of the association. The body also unanimously conferred the honorary title of Chairman Emeritus to the Honorable Gina de Venesia. I cannot promise to top Manay Gina's supremely gracious style of leadership, which is legendary. So I shall step up, not in competition, but in full acknowledgement that we must do all we can to enlarge the voice of women. My administration would like to pursue major legacy projects, pursuant to the association's policy and tradition of advancing the legislative agenda on women and children, and pursuing timely and responsive social undertakings. In the past, funds were raised for assistance to survivors of typhoid Yolanda and the Pediatric Cancer Unit of the PGH, among others. Perhaps this time, we could look into a similar assistance to be extended to the widows and orphans from today's vicious drug war. Parallel to this initiative, I would like to invite particularly the members of the association as well as the members of the supermajority coalition to support my bill on Fundamental Equality, House Bill 219, which was already referred to the Committee on Women and Gender Equality. And it was refiled from the 15th and 16th Congress. It pertains to provisions in the family code which still give priority over the decision of the husband or the father, despite the fact that spouses are presumed to be on equal status within a family unit. It is not only antiquated, it has also already been superseded by the Magna Carta of Women. Thus, I enjoin my fellow women lawmakers to be co-authors of House Bill 219. The women legislators of this house look forward to the implementation of legacy projects for the advancement of women and their families, and the approval of progressive bills from women that can only redound to the strengthening of the Filipino family. Our association would like to congratulate too the Honorable Emeline Aglipay Villar of the Diwa Party List, who now chairs the Committee on Women and Gender Equality. That is one tough assignment I should know. As its chairperson in the 16th Congress, the committee managed to secure only one law, despite the fact that 41 House bills and seven House resolutions were acted upon. Republic Act 10906, an act providing stronger measures against unlawful practices, businesses, and schemes of matching and offering Filipinos to foreign nationals for purposes of marriage or common law partnership. Repealing for the purpose, Republic Act Number 6955, also referred to as the Anti-Male Order Bride Law, is one important law from a long list of legislative agenda that the CWGE shall continue to tackle in the 7th Congress. Hopefully, the House Bill Fundamental Equality 219 shall be a priority in the agenda of the CWG's first meeting. In closing, we, the women legislators, need to catch up to narrow the gender gap in our society. Indeed, to move up from a 29% women representation in the House to the desired balance of 50-50 representation is a long way to go. Until then, and under my watch, the Association of Women Legislators Foundation Incorporated shall do what it can to speed up to our desired change. Good afternoon, and thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Congresswoman Villarica. The manifestation is duly noted, and we greet you with deep congratulations, and we wish you luck with all your undertakings. Please note that all the male legislators in this Congress have a full acknowledgement that the women legislators are always better than us. We wish you luck. Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, before we proceed, may we greet the guests of the distinguished gentleman from the 1st District of Bulacan, the Honorable Jose Antonio C. Alvarado. They are Vice Mayor Ricardo Candido of Pulilan, Bulacan, and Adrian C. Alvarado, the brother of the gentleman, Mr. Speaker.
Will the guests of the Honorable C. Alvarado, please rise? May init po na pagtanggap dito po sa bulwaga ng ating batasan. Maraming salamat po. Yes, the Majority Leader?
Likewise, Mr. Speaker, may we greet the guests of the distinguished Majority Leader, the Honorable Rodolfo Farinhas. They are Honorable Maynard Bautista, Mayor. They are SB members Elia Buentipo, Ephraim Bosque, Roxana Gudar, Norman Labanan, Grady Steve Barbero, Solomon Dixon, Generoso Bose, and Alejandro Amit as IP representative, likewise, Mark John Yamat as ABC President, and Apollo Bernardino Vice as Vice Mayor, and another SB member, Marion Barbero.
Will the guests of the Majority Leader, the Honorable Rodolfo Farinhas, please rise? Naimbag na alda, hapon, sa inyo, mabuhay po kayo, mga apo. Welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, I move that we resume the privilege hour.
Is there any objection? Hearing none, the privilege hour is resumed.
Mr. Speaker, next to speak is the distinguished gentleman from the 3rd District of Negroes Oriental, the Honorable Arnolfo Tevez, the Honorable Gabriel, ah no, rather, Mr. Speaker, the gentleman from the 3rd District of Camarines, the Honorable Gabriel Bordado Jr. May he be recognized, Mr. Speaker.
The Honorable Gabriel Bordado Jr., the former councillor, undefeated Vice Mayor of Naga City. The giant killer is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Last August 15, 2016, President Rodrigo Rova Duterte submitted to the 17th Congress of the Philippines the proposed budget for fiscal year 2017 amounting to 3.35 trillion pesos. I understand, Mr. Speaker, that we are now on our third day of budgetary hearings at the committee level. While our colleagues in the Committee on Appropriations review the submissions of every government agency, a new-fried congressman like me also pours over the documents to study whether the allocations are reasonable, just, and equitable. I must confess, Mr. Speaker, that the budget numbers spelled out in four thick volumes intimidate me. We are however tasked to understand the data and figures presented before us and ensure that our budget translates to better government services for every Filipino. The increase in the national budget financed through taxes and loans should be felt by our constituents in terms of efficient service delivery. The increase in spending must resolve in easier access to social and economic services. Mr. Speaker, we need to look into the absorptive capacities of all the departments to identify the causes of underspending, which in a way deprives our people of the needed programs and projects to propel economic growth, particularly in the less developed provinces. Budgetary allocations, which remain unspent at the end of every fiscal year, results not only in non-delivery of services, which would have otherwise benefited our constituents, but also deprives other departments with better absorptive capacities to spend more for the services that can uplift the living condition of our people. Mr. Speaker, we must also consider regional allocation of public investments to see how equitable the distribution of public expenditures is in relation to the population being served, particularly those in the poverty threshold. Health, educational, and agricultural services must reach the poorest citizens in the regions. The provinces with the highest levels of poverty incidence, Mr. Speaker, must be given more budgetary allocation for people in those areas to be able to catch up with their counterparts in developed urban centers of the country. As we studied the proposed budget, there is a need to review whether the allocation of resources has been done in a manner that no department or agency receives more resources at the expense of another, that no sector is sacrificed in favor of another sector, and that every allocation is justified in terms of needs and not in terms of wants. Budgetary cuts must only be done when necessary, while ensuring that this will not mean deprivation of basic services that will further imperil human development. Thus, any budgetary cut must be looked into and explanations must be solicited from the agencies. Initially, Mr. Speaker, this representation was alarmed by the budgetary cut in the Department of Health reported in the papers, only to be rebutted by the Health Secretary Pauline Ovial herself. That is why we are studying the figures, not just in the DOH, but also in the Department of Agriculture, as this is the department that serves the most number of people below the poverty threshold. We are also looking at the Department of Education budget, whether there is an effective increase in the allocation or whether the increase only covers the requirement of the K-12 program. Mr. Speaker, this representation lords President Duterte for coming up with a budget that provides a clear philosophy and direction, just and disciplined fiscal policy geared toward social order and equitable progress with actual spending consistent with congressional approval and with clear accountability to the people, while strengthening local government units as partners in the delivery of basic services. Mr. Chairman, we must vigorously pursue the strategy of allocating resources to local government units based on their implementation of good governance standards, while at the same time helping them to improve their capability to generate resources and revenues. At this stage, Mr. Speaker, I would therefore call for the setting of direction, and I agree with the direction set by the President. And this must inspire the local officials to work harder to make their municipalities, cities, and provinces competitive in terms of service delivery. After all, Mr. Speaker, the delivery of basic services must be the core competency of LGUs. The quality of service delivery by the national government must be felt and appreciated by the citizens in the quality of service provided by the local government units. Towards this end, the 17th Congress must rise to the challenge of the President to make the budget responsive to the needs of the people. The Crafting of the Budget Reform Act, with the assistance of the Department of Budget and Management, must be a priority agenda of this chamber. Budgetary standards per capita or per targeted recipient must be developed and incorporated into the law. This way, allocation of resources will impact the least developed areas dispersing development to the fringes and peripheries of our nation, raising the standard of living, not just in the cities and metropolises, but also in the poorest and most remote communities. Only then, Mr. Speaker, can we claim that our proposed 2017 budget is truly, to use the words of President Duterte himself, "the embodiment of our people's clamor for real change and compassionate government." Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, may we recognize the distinguished gentleman from the 1st District of Camarines Sur, the Honorable Rolando Andaya Jr. for his interpolation.
The Honorable Rolando Andaya Jr. is recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Just a few questions if the gentleman from Camarines Sur is willing, Mr. Speaker.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, I consider it a signal honor to be interpolated by the former Budget Secretary and former Chairman of the Committee on Appropriations.
Please proceed.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Allow me to do the gentleman from Camarines Sur a favor of helping him dissect the budget, something which no one did for me. Since I'm graduating now, I will do it for you.
Yes, actually, Mr. Speaker, the Honorable Andaya is virtually serving me as my mentor in the process of budgeting.
You're old to me, huh? Mentor, mentor. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Just from the two departments that you mentioned, namely DA and DOH, can you please tell me where there increases from the past year to the current year to the proposed 2017?
Yes, in the case of the Department of Health, there has been a cut.
A decrease?
A decrease.
How about the DA?
In the same manner with the Department of Agriculture. But in the case of the Department of Health, Mr. Speaker, the secretary issued a pronouncement the other day that there was actually an increase in the budget of the Department of Health because the Phil Health funds were...
That's not an increase in the Department of Health, that's an increase in the health sector.
Okay, yes.
Only the Department of Health, so there's a decrease. You are correct, there's a decrease.
There is a decrease, Mr. Speaker.
How about the Department of Agriculture? Is it the same? Same situation? A decrease?
Yes, there is also a decrease in the allocation for the Department of Agriculture by something like 3.6 billion pesos.
Okay. Did you bother to look at the budget of the PNP? The PNP?
Not yet, not yet.
The Philippine National Police.
Although there is an indication here that the Philippine National Police will be receiving an additional allocation of 25 billion pesos, Mr. Speaker.
Alright, so as an aggregate amount, the DA gets a decrease, the DOH gets a decrease, the PNP gets a decrease. If you further break this down, for the Department of Agriculture, if you break it down to PS, MOE in capital outlay, did you look at the result?
Actually, I haven't...
Let me tell you the result. If you look at the DA and the DOH, you will see for the salaries of the employees in the Department of Agriculture, there is an increase. But in terms of MOE and capital outlay, both have decreases. Same thing for DOH, you have an increase in the personal services, decreases in MOE in capital outlay. It is only the PNP which receives an increase in all three categories, PS, MOE, capital outlay. Now what does this mean, Mr. Speaker? You know, the budget, Mr. Speaker, is the single most important piece of legislation which the Constitution requires us to pass. We can afford to pass nothing else, but only one document is required by the Constitution, and that's the budget.
The budget.
Because the budget is the only place where the President can actually put his money where his mouth is. For all his talk, all of these things should actually be present in the budget. The budget is not merely a political tool, but it's also a tool for development. So what does this say? Means that, I'm not saying it's not a priority, but peace and security, PNP, is of a higher priority than agriculture and in health. But more important than that, the deeper underlying meaning of this kind of allocation, I have not had the privilege of looking at the other departments, but this will be the same, I'm sure of it, it will be the same situation. This only means that any increase in revenue which we will get from the expansion of our economy next year will only go to salary increases. That's what it means. That is why in all other departments you see a decrease in capital outlay. When we talk about 5% of GDP in terms of infrastructure spending, I don't see that happening with all these decreases coming in. So, what does it mean? It means be prepared for the next round of tax increases. That's what it means. Because when you have this kind of an allocation, the next thing that will happen is a major round of tax increases. I'll give you an example. In the budget presentation last Monday, they were talking about revenue decreasing measures, re-indexing the income tax, corporate tax, all the good things that will result in a revenue loss of 130 billion. 130 billion. Let me now go to a promise of the President in which he says he wants to double the salaries of teachers, policemen, and soldiers only, we're not talking about the other members of the bureaucracy. Did anyone even bother to ask how much would that cost? Let me tell you, Mr. Speaker, that costs 230 billion pesos. Where will you get that 230 billion pesos? When you're already giving away 130 billion next year. So that's what it means. As I've said, budgeting is not about spending, budgeting is about revenue generating. So if you do not have the money to spend, we don't have the money to spend on the budget. Because we don't have the money to spend on the budget. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Thank you very much for the time given to me by the gentleman from Camarines Sur.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker.
Majority Leader.
May we know what is the pleasure of the gentleman, Mr. Speaker?
Mr. Speaker, is the Honorable Bordado still available for a few questions?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
The honorable gentleman from Wan Sagip, which garnered the most number of votes in my district, the Honorable Rodel Marcoleta is recognized to interpolate.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, Your Honor, I'm glad that you took special interest in the budget as presented to us. And you were citing several places or areas in our country where poverty incidence rate is so big or so wide as compared to other areas, which is of course correct. For example, in Central Luzon, probably the poverty incidence rate could be in the range of 11 to 12%, but in Mindanao, particularly, ARMM is more than 50%.
In Bicol, Mr. Speaker, the poverty incidence is quite high.
Yes, and so I cannot blame you if you insist on spending the right money for the right areas in order to see some equitable
Distribution of the budget.
Distribution of wealth in the dispensation of our budget. Mr. Speaker, Your Honor, a classic example of the wide disparity or inequity in this country is represented by what we call per capita income, meaning to say our total population or our GDP is divided by our total population, and that is the per capita. About two days ago, in the budget hearing for DBCC, they presented a slide where the per capita in ARMM is only about 11,000 pesos. Meaning to say, if we divide the national output by our population representing ARMM, each citizen in that region shares only about 11,000 pesos. When compared to the citizens in NCR, the slide shows that the per capita is 219,000 pesos. So easily you can compare the anomalous difference. So easily you can compare the anomalous difference between the share of citizens in ARMM with that of...
The national capital region.
The national capital region. As a matter of fact, the share of the ARMM citizens is only 6% of what is shared by the citizens in NCR, is that correct?
Yes.
And so, you express particular interest in the budget. And you said that you browse it, and I congratulate you for doing so because I have not even seen 10% of it. I am still struggling to read some of it.
Actually, Mr. Speaker, I just managed to check certain pages of the four volumes of the budget. And this was spurred by the fact that there was this news report regarding the drastic cut in the budget of the DOH, in the budget of the Department of Agriculture. I was really a bit worried why there was a drastic cut in the DOH budget and also with the Department of Agriculture allocation. I should know, Mr. Speaker, if we will be cutting the budget of the Department of Health, for instance, the immediate impact will be felt by the impoverished sector of the nation, the poor, the poorest of the poor. In the same manner with the Department of Agriculture, most of the people living in the so-called poverty threshold are dependent on agriculture for a living or for livelihood, Mr. Speaker.
We will go to that, Mr. Speaker, your honor. I think the DOH was able to explain itself days later when they referred to another budgetary outlay. I think the papers were unable to capture the very essence of the presentation of budget. Anyway, the DOH was able to explain that it was not really a negative budget.
But, Mr. Speaker, I was intrigued by what the former Budget Secretary said a while ago. That, Mr. Speaker, Congressman Andaya was claiming that there was a reduction, actually. Anyway, I'll try to check, Mr. Speaker.
Yes, but actually, that is not our interest today. I will be probably asking you if, in your initial reading of the budget, were you able to at least see some initiatives in that budget where the anomalous disparity between the income in other areas of our country can be narrowed, because that is supposed to be our objective. We are here to determine whether or not the budget is supposed to be spent in a manner that people can equitably share in the national income. Have you seen at least some initiatives in the budget where we are going into that direction, where the wide disparity in income can be addressed more or less, Mr. Speaker, your honor?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, I fully agree with Congressman that wide disparity in incomes still exists up to now. And I haven't really studied the intricacies and the details of the budget, Mr. Speaker. And how I wish I would have the time to fully appreciate all the figures presented in these four volumes of our 2017 budget, Mr. Speaker.
And, Mr. Speaker, your honor, did you notice that the 3.35 trillion peso budget represents something like 21% of our projected GDP according to the BCC, DBCC? And if you noted, they also said that the projected GDP this year is only about 14.5 trillion pesos. Meaning to say, they're projecting that the GDP for 2017 will be more than 10%. Do you believe that we will be able to attain a rate as much as, let's say, 9.5 to 10% next year compared to the output in 2016?
I believe, Mr. Speaker, Congressman Marcoletta, that the executive will have to double its work. As pointed out by the Honorable Andaya, budgeting is more focused on revenue generation. I agree, I agree, Congressman Marcoletta and Mr. Speaker.
Last question, Mr. Speaker, your honor. And I think you will also note that the projected revenue or tax collection represents only about 15 point something percent of the GDP. Meaning to say, there is not much money expected from tax collection. And so, if we are projecting this budget, as the Honorable Andaya already pointed out, I think we should be able to focus more on where to get the revenue than being able to spend so much and dream about equalizing the prospects of national income to be distributed equitably to our citizens.
Precisely, I fully agree with Congressman Marcoletta. I think we have to focus more on the revenue generation aspect of this, of the scheme of things. We just cannot say, okay, we have to increase the wages of several sectors unless we have a clear source of revenues to, well, to backstop whatever increases in the wages are concerned.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, your honor, for your interest in the budget.
Thank you very much, Congressman Marcoletta. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we suspend the Privilegiar.
There is a motion here in objection, the Privilegiar is suspended.
Mr. Speaker, before we proceed, please allow me to correct a mistake. Earlier, I have mistakenly attributed our guests from the Long District of Abra. They are really the guests of the Honorable Joseph Ninho Bernos. They are as follows, again, let us greet them again. Mayor Maynardo Bautista, SB members Elabentipo, Efraim Bosque, Roxeta Gudar, Norman Labanan, Lady Steve Barbero, Solomon Dixon, Generoso Bose, Alejandro Amit, Mark Gianni Amat, Vice Mayor Paulo Bernardino, and likewise SB member Marion Barbero.
Will the guest of the Honorable Joseph Santoninho Bernos please rise to be recognized? Welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for a roll call.
The Secretary General is directed to read the roll of members. Roll call of members, honorable representatives. Abad, Abaya, Abayon, Abilyanosa, Abu, Abweg, Acharon, Akop, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Ajong, Advingula, Agarau, Agabau, Aglipaybiliar, Akbar, Albano, Alcalá, Alihano, Almario, Almonte, Alontenaguiat, Álvarez Franz, Álvarez Mercedes, Álvarez Pantallón, Amante, Amatong, Andaya, Angara Castillo, Antonino, Antonio, Aragonés, Arbison, Arcillas, Arenas, Atienza, Aumentado, Bagau, Bagaching, Bagilat, Banal, Barbers, Barsaga, Batawil, Batucabe, Bautista, Bautista Bandigan, Belaro, Belmonte Villasano, Belmonte Señor Cristoper, Belmonte Ricardo, Benitez, Bernos, Bertis, Viason, Billones, Viron, Bulilia, Bundok, Bordado, Bravo Anthony, Bravo Meribida, Brosas, Bulot Big Tang, Kagas, Calderón, Kalik Serbiano, Caminero, Campos, Canama, Kari, Casilau, Castelo, Casa Franz, Casa Fredinil, Katamco, Cayetano, Celeste, Ceravica, Seriles, Chávez, Chupeco, Co, Cuanco, Culiantes, Cortez, Cortuna, Osalan, Crisólogo, Cuba, Quaresma, Cueva, Dalipe, Dalog, Dasa, De Jesus, De Venesia, De Vera, De Pensor, Del Mar, Del Rosario, De Los Montalia, De Moporo Abdullah, De Moporo Khalid, Duavit, Durano, Di, Elago, Enverga, Erise, Ergel, Hermita Boain, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Yusebio, Evardone, Fariñas, Fernando, Ferrer Juliet, Ferrer Luis, Ferriol, Florrendo, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Pentebelia, Garbin, García Guendolin, García Uc, García Albano, Garin Dichard, Garin Charon, Gasataya, Tachilian Wes, Heron, Guana Cristina, Gomart, Gómez, Gonzaga, González, González Alexandria, González Aurelio, González Fernando, Goreseta, Gulyas, Hernández, Herrera Di, Hofer, Alusos, Javier, Co, Congun, Labad Labad, Lacson, Lagman, Lanete, Laugán, Glasatin, Lia Chon, Li, Limcaichong, Lobrigat, López Benur, López Carlo, López Manuel, Loyola, Macapagalaroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Manalo, Mangawang, Mongodadato, Mongodadato Suarto, Mongodadato Sajid, Marcoletta, Marcos, Marino, Marques, Martínez, Matugas, Millana, Mendín, Mercado, Mirasol, Montoro, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Nograles Jerico, Nograles Carlo, Nolasco, Núñez Maleñáon, Waminal, Ocampo, Olivares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Ortega, Ortega Pablo, Ortega Vini, Paciau, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panganiban, Manotes, Papandayan, Pichai, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Primicia Segabas, Kimbo, Radaza, Ramiresato, Ramos, Relampagos, Revilla, Ropapuno, Robes, Rocamora, Rodriguez Isidro, Rodriguez Máximo, Roman, Romero, Romualdes, Romualdo, Roque Harry, Roque Rogelio, Sacnalan, Sagarberia, Sahali, Salceda, Salimbangan, Salo, Salon, Sambar, Sandobal, Santos Repto, Sarmito Cesar, Sarmito Edgar, Savillano, Savillano Semah Xiao Silverio Singson Suansing Estrita Suansing Rasyo Suárez Sielbarado Tambunting Tan Angelina Tan Milagrosa Tan Sherni Tejada Teves Chanco Ting Tiño Tolentino Trenyas Tugna Tupas Turapi Nataman Ti Umalí Unavia Ungab Uniko Uy Juliet Uy Rolando Uy Barreta Vargas Vargas Alfonso Vilarde Vilasco, Vilasco, Vilasco Lord Vilasco Catera Veloso Vergara Villapuerte Villanueva Villanasá Suárez Villarica Villarin Villago Yap Arthur Yap Milexo Yap Victor Yu Samora Marcamin Samora Ronaldo Sarate Subiri
Mister Speaker, the roll call shows that 226 members responded to the call.
With 226 members responding to the call, the chair declares the presence of a quorum. Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, may we greet the guests of the distinguished lady from the sixth district of Manila, the honorable Rosenda An Ocampo. It is the inanang bayan sa sa is described as a potent force for women empowerment in Manila.
Will the guests of the honorable Congressman Sandy Ocampo please rise? Welcome po sa House of Representatives, magandang hapon po sa inyong lahat. Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, I move that we resume the privilege hour.
Is there any objection? Hearing none, the privilege hour is resumed.
Mister Speaker, I move that we refer the speech of the honorable Gabriel Bordado Junior to the Committee on Rules.
Is there any objection? The speech of the honorable Bordado as well as the interpolations are referred to the Committee on Rules.
Mister Speaker, I move that we terminate the privilege hour.
Is there any objection? Hearing none, the privilege hour is terminated.
Mister Speaker, I move for suspension.
Session is suspended.
...
The session is hereby resumed. Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, I move for the election of the following members to their respective committees.
Please proceed.
As Deputy Majority Leader, Arnold T., as Members of the Committee on Rules, Ortega Romero Garcia. To the Committee on Accounts, Vice Chair Plaza, as Members, Delmar Adyong, Belmonte Jose Christopher Cueva, Plaza Meliana Pancho. Committee on Appropriations, Members, Ungab Roque, Fortuno Arbison, Tejada Amatong, Abad Katamco, Adyong Agarau, De Losa Montalia Goriseta, Limcaichong Roman, Sarmiento Edgar, Vargas Alfonso Batawil, Plaza Meliana Pancho Silverio Uy Subiri. Fortune, Constitutional Amendments, as Members, Fortune Bolilia Acop Batawil, Nograles Carlo, Abad Bagao. Cooperatives Development Kanama Silverio Plaza Santos Repto. Dangerous Drugs, Members, Dalog Arbison, Amante Mangawang, Ungab Acop Batawil Ferrer Agarau Belmonte Jose Christopher. Ecology, as Member Silverio. Economic Affairs, as Members, Roque Garcia Ting. Energy, as Members, Lopez Carlo Congon Bolilia Xiao Tupas Plaza Salimbangan Uy Juliet Abad Relampagos Ramires Sato Mariño and Lobregat. Ethics and Privileges, as Members, Bolilia and Ramires Sato. Foreign Affairs, as Members, Go Marcos Vargas Alfonso Batawil Revilia De Losa Montalia de Venesia. Games and Amusement, Chipeco Go Madrona Halosjos Robes Acop Austria Barsaga Ferrer Pancho Rova Puno Banal Castillo and Goriseta. Good Government and Public Accountability Uwaminal Osalan, as Members, Cueva Bagao de Venesia and Roman. Government Enterprises and Privatization, as Members, Robes Plaza Revilia Abad Vargas. Government Reorganization, as Member the Venesia. Health, as Members Espina Tejada Go Acop Vargas Alfonso Barsaga Quaresma Banal Katamco Relampagos Goriseta and Roman. Higher and Technical Education, as Members, Acosta Alba Espina Madrona Tupas Dalog Cueva Garcia Plaza Meliana Ong Castillo Belmonte Jose Christopher De Losa Montalia Ramires Sato and Limcaichong. Housing and Urban Development, as Members, Sabelliano Ungab Ferrer Garcia Jose Revilia Bagao Castillo and Vargas. Human Rights, as Members Katamco and Relampagos. Cultural Communities in Indigenous Peoples, as Members Mangawang and Bordado. Interparliamentary Relations and Diplomacy, as Members, Cagas Malaniaon Vargas Alfonso Puno Ramires Sato and Santos Repto. Labor and Employment, as Members, Aglipay Villar Barberz Ferrer Ong Edwin Uy Juliet Belmonte Jose Christopher De Losa Montalia and Santos Repto. Metro Manila Development Lopez Carlo and Aglipay Villar, as Members. Mindanao Affairs, as Members Tejada Halosjos Amante Acosta Alba Bagao Adyong Amatong and Romualdo. National Defense and Security, as Members Halosjos Uwaminal Albano Rodolfo Acop Si Alvarado Uy Juliet Mariño Vargas Romualdo Katamco and Pichai. Overseas Workers Affairs, as Vice Chairpersons, De Jesus Swansing and Castillo, as Members Samora Pakiau Violago Sabelliano Delmar and Revilia. Public Works and Highways, as Vice Chairpersons, Serapica Ramos Gonzalez Aurelio Jr. Goriseta Arbison Ferrer Juliet, as Members, Calixto Robiano Primicias Agabas Tan Milagrosa Velasco Lord Alan Advincula Aragonés Caminero Mangudadato Sahid, Acosta Akbar Bautista Bandigan Bernos Cortez Espino Fernando Gonzaga Labat Labat Lasatin Mangudadato Suartó Martinez Palma and Panotes. More Members, Pimentel Unico Adyong Agarau Amatong Mariño Roman Santos Repto Sarmiento Edgar Delmar Amante Xiao Fortuno Congun Barberz Tupas Mangawang Brabo Quaresma Ferrer Revilia and Vargas Alfonso. Revision of Laws, as Members Ebardone Rocamora Veloso Sato Uy Juliet. Suffrage and Electoral Reforms Zamora Romualdo Sato Barberz Fortun Ong Chuwan Edwin Ong Si Alvarado. Trade and Industry, as Vice Chairpersons Romualdo and Silverio, as Members Rodriguez Maximo Jr. Trenyas Alvarez Franz Tambunting Relampagos Belmonte Jose Christopher Limcaichong Acosta Alba Go Mark Sabelliano Lopez Uy Juliet and Garcia. Women and Gender Equality, as Vice Chairpersons, Aragonés Alonte and Roman, as Members Villarica Zamora Arenas Sahali Swansing Estrelita Bagatting Gonzalez Alexandria Nava Violago Coliantes Abad Limcaichong Bordado Santos Repto Uy Juliet and Romualdes. Youth and Sports Development, as Members Olivares Bernos Dimaporro Mohamed Khalid Lasatin Malapitan Matugas Tevez Lopez Carlo Cagas de Venesia Vargas and Cueva. Basis Conversion, as Vice Chairperson De Losa Montalia, as Members Lasatin Sandoval Roman Congon Go Mark Mangawang. Vehicle Recovery and Economic Development, as Vice Chairperson Bordado, as Members Gonzalez Fernando Panotes and Co. East Asian, East ASEAN Growth Area, Vice Chairpersons Acosta Mangudadato Suartó Amatong, as Members Sahali Akbar and Xiao. Globalization and WTO, as Chairperson Santos Repto, as Members Delmar and Puno. Land Use, as Vice Chair, Si Alvarado and Members Robes and Uy Juliet. Peace Reconciliation and Unity, as Chair, Vice Chairperson Sakdalan and Belmonte Jose Christopher, as Members Papandayan. Reforestation, as Vice Chairperson Agarau and as Members Celeste and Roque. Southern Tagalog Development, as Members Alonte Chipeco Santos Repto and Puno. And finally, on Sustainable Development Goals, as Vice Chairperson Katamco Nancy.
Is there any objection? Hearing none, the motion is approved. Majority Leader.
May the Minority Leader be recognized Mister Speaker.
The Minority Leader Congressman Danilo Suarez is recognized.
Thank you Mister Chair. Mister Speaker, I respectfully move that the following members of the minority be designated as additional deputies of the Minority Floor Leader. Congressman Harry Roque Congressman Luis Jose Angel Campos, I so move Mister Speaker.
Is there any objection? Hearing none, the motion is approved.
Mister Speaker, I so move in accordance with Section 28, as of the Rule 9, that the above mentioned deputies be designated as additional minority members of the Committee on Rules. I so move Mister Speaker.
Is there any objection? Hearing none, the motion is approved. Majority Leader.
I move for suspension Mister Speaker.
Session is suspended for a few minutes. Session is resumed.
Mister Speaker, last August 17, we elected Representatives Bai Sandra Asema and Ferdinand L. Hernandez as Deputy Speakers of the House of Representatives. Mister Speaker, I move that we allow the two Deputy Speakers elect to take their oaths.
Is there any objection to the motion? The Chair hears none, the motion is approved. May we request the Deputy Speaker-elect Representative Bai Sandra Asema to proceed to the rostrum with the members of her family for her oath-taking, together with the armed representatives. Okay, please raise your ha- right hand and take your oath before me.
I Bai Sandra Asema of the 1st District of Magindano and Cotobato City, having been elected as Deputy Speaker, House of Representatives, hereby solemnly swear that I will well and faithfully discharge to the best of my ability the duties of my present position and of all others. I may hereafter hold under the Republic of the Philippines that I will support and defend the Constitution of the Philippines, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and that I will obey the laws, legal orders and decrees promulgated by the duly constituted authorities of the Republic of the Philippines and that I will impose this obligation upon myself voluntarily without mental reservation or purpose obviation. So help me Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala.
Congratulations. May we request Deputy Speaker-elect Representative Ferdinand Hernandez to proceed to the rostrum with the members of his family for his oath-taking. Please raise your right hand and take your oath before me.
I, Ferdinand Ledezma Hernandez, of the second district of South Catabato, having been elected as deputy speaker, House of Representatives, hereby solemnly swear that I will well and faithfully discharge, to the best of my ability, the duties of my present position and of all others, I may hereafter hold under the Republic of the Philippines, that I will support and defend the Constitution of the Philippines, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and I will obey the laws, legal orders and decrees promulgated by the duly constituted authorities of the Republic of the Philippines and that I impose this obligation upon myself voluntarily, without mental reservation or purpose of evasion. So help me God.
Congratulations.
Mr. Speaker, last August eighth, the House adopted resolution number eight commending Heidlin Diaz for exceptional feat in winning the Rio two thousand sixteen Olympic silver medal in the women's fifty-three kilogram weightlifting division on August seventh, two thousand sixteen, in Rio de Janeiro, Brazil. The House also adopted resolution number nine on August twenty-two, two thousand sixteen, conferring the Congressional Medal of Distinction to Miss Heidlin F. Diaz for winning the silver medal in the women's weightlifting fifty-three kilogram category in the two thousand sixteen Rio de Janeiro Summer Olympic Games. Before we award the Congressional Medal of Distinction to Miss Diaz, I move that we recognize the following members for their individual manifestation. The first is Representative Celso Lobregat.
Representative Celso Lobregat is recognized.
Mr. Speaker, colleagues, Heidlin Diaz, Philippine Sports Commission Chairman Butch Ramirez, Counselor Bon Attilano in charge of Heidlin's training, Coach Alfoncito Aldanete, ladies and gentlemen. This afternoon, August twenty-four, two thousand sixteen, it is with deep pride and the highest of honor that we welcome and congratulate Heidlin Diaz, the Filipina who won a silver medal in the weightlifting in the two thousand sixteen Rio de Janeiro Olympics and by doing so, ended the Philippines twenty-year-old medal drought in the Olympics. It is of record that this last from Mindanao, particularly from Barangay, Mampang, San Buanga City, is the first Filipina and first Mindanawan to ever win an Olympic medal. I ask my colleagues to please rise and give Heidlin a loud and warm hands of applause, which she truly deserves. Heidlin Diaz, now twenty-five years old, was born in San Buanga on February twenty nineteen ninety-one. She comes from very humble beginnings. Her father Eduardo Diaz is now a retired tricycle driver and her mother, Emelita, a housewife. Heidlin is the fifth of six children. Heidlin's weightlifting career began at the very tender age of eleven when she first competed in the two thousand two Batang Pinoy in Puerto Princesa and won a gold medal. If my memory serves me right, it was under the thirty-two, under thirty-two kilogram category. At that time, during the administration of then-mayor Maria Clara Lobregat, the city government of San Buanga already had a grassroots program that supported and assisted young athletes to train, develop and participate in local competitions. Heidlin's first international medal was in two thousand and seven, the twenty-fifth Southeast Asian Games in Thailand, where she got bronze and she also set a Philippine record. I was then-mayor of San Buanga City and I recall that by virtue of City Ordinance two-six-seven, we awarded Heidlin the appropriate financial incentive. In two thousand and eight, Heidlin was selected as a wild card entry to the Summer Olympics in Beijing, China. She was the first female to compete in weightlifting for the Philippines in the Olympics and although she did not get any medals, her performance was considered promising for her age. Heidlin broke the record that she set in the two thousand seven Southeast Asian Games. In two thousand eleven, Heidlin participated in the twenty-six Southeast Asian Games in Indonesia and won the silver. Again, I recall that as mayor, the city government provided her provided her with the appropriate financial incentive courtesy of Ordinance two-six-seven. In two thousand and twelve, Heidlin Diaz participated for the second time in the Olympics in London. It was indeed a painful loss as she ended with the result of DNF, did not finish, as she was unsuccessful in lifting the one hundred eighteen kilogram in clean and jerk after three attempts. Yes, she failed. Yes, she stumbled. Yes, she fell. But Heidlin exemplified the resiliency and tenacity of the Filipino and backed her past Olympic failure. She did not run away from the battle. She did not give up. She rose, she focused, trained and prepared herself for the next Olympics. On her journey to the two thousand sixteen Rio Olympics, she competed and won the following: two thousand thirteen Southeast Asian Games, Myanmar, silver; Asian Weightlifting Championship, two thousand fifteen, Thailand, gold; World Weightlifting Championship, Houston, Texas, two thousand fifteen, bronze; two thousand sixteen Asian Weightlifting Championship, bronze. And finally, after twenty long years, a Filipina, a Mindanawan, a San Buanganja, weighing only fifty-three kilos or one hundred seventeen pounds, measuring less than five feet, one point four-nine meters to be exact, or four feet and ten and a half inches, wins a silver medal in the two thousand Olympics. Heidlin, you have proven to all Filipinos, especially the youth, that with hard work, determination, perseverance and true grit, no dreamer is too small and no dream is too big to be realized. Heidlin, you make us proud and you stand tall, tallest among all Filipinas for you are the first and only Filipina to achieve this feat, a medal, a silver medal at that in the Olympics. Heidlin, today is your day at the House of Representatives. You will be receiving the Congressional Medal of Distinction and a House resolution congratulating and commending you. And as we celebrate your victory and show our gratitude, the House leadership and the members of this House will later be presenting you a substantial monetary award as a sign of our appreciation and recognition of your outstanding performance in the Olympics and for your unceasing dedication to the sport. Heidlin, on a personal note, I know you dream of buying the lot beside your house in Mampang. I hope that using part of this monetary award for buying the said lot, you can make your dreams come true. To Bebop, the speaker Bebop Alvarez, Majority Leader Rudy Fariñas, Minority Leader Dani Suarez and to the members of the House of Representatives, thank you. Muchas gracias for the monetary award, which was achieved through your personal voluntary and generous contributions to agreed salary deductions. You have all made Heidlin's dream come true. Heidlin, as I end, again, congratulations and thank you for sharing everything that you have done with us and remember, with hard work, determination, perseverance and true grit, no dreamer is too small or a dream too big to be realized. Enhorabuena. Gracias. Adelante, San Buanga. Go for gold in the twenty-twenty Tokyo Olympics.
Mr. Speaker, I move that Representative Maria Cristina Puno be recognized.
Representative Maria Cristina Roa Puno is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, my colleagues in the seventeenth Congress, distinguished guests today at the House of Representatives, good evening. It's been over two weeks since our honorary sent shockwaves throughout the country with her landmark performance at the Rio Olympics and the fever has yet to die down. We are proud to honor today airwoman first-class Heidlin Diaz for bringing us to heights we had not reached in two decades. Yes, it has been that long since the country last experienced the euphoria of winning an Olympic medal. As a veteran sports anchor and correspondent of twenty-two years, I witnessed firsthand back in nineteen ninety-six what many now remember as the robbery in Atlanta, Onyok Velasco's failed bid for the first Olympic gold medal for the country. Our boxer deserved the gold, but he came home with the silver. Still, what ensued was a kind of high our country had not known before. We excitedly took to the streets to welcome Onyok, the hero, a small boxer with a heart big enough to make his mark among the best athletes in the world. And today, another hero emerges, a non-boxer, a Mindanawan, a Filipino woman, brandishing girl power at its best. She showed the world that the Filipino is strong in every sense of the word. But surely, her victory did not come easy. In my line of work, I have seen storied journeys of countless Filipino athletes. I have seen the proverbial blood, sweat and tears that athletes copiously shed as they strive to be the best in their fields. Often, the tears are of defeat, of frustration, sometimes of despair, a reality Miss Diaz knows all too well. But on that fateful evening of August seventh, we witnessed Heidlin shed triumphant tears, tears of pure joy and elation, perhaps even of relief and exhaustion. There could not have been a dry eye among the Filipinos who witnessed our five-foot weightlifting giant bag the silver in the fifty-three kilo category in the Rio Olympic Games. Heidlin was a last-minute wild card entry in Beijing in two thousand and eight. She gained strength, suffered an injury in London in two thousand and twelve. The Asian Games eluded her in two thousand and fourteen and she almost quit because of it. But two years later, here you are, Heidlin, a decorated Olympian. You had lifelong dreams of buying your tatay a tricycle and gifting your beloved nanay an Olympic medal for her birthday. Now dreams you have both fulfilled. Or perhaps by your own account, you found God and the meaning of prayer which became your real inspiration to keep going. Whatever the reason, you knew you had a mission and a real shot at an Olympic medal and today we celebrate the fulfillment of your dream. And indeed, you have accomplished much more. You have also brought to the fore the many problems that besieged our national athletes. Dismal living conditions, substandard training centers, deficient coaching, inadequate nutrition, a lack of financial support and the list goes on. But the more important lesson is this. You have reminded us that in spite of these challenges, it is wrong to simply give up on our struggling athletes, that the country should not lose hope in your fellow weightlifter, Nestor Colonia, who is here with us today, nor abandon the ten other Pinoy Olympians who came home empty-handed from Rio, that we should never forsake the rest of them, the fearless, nameless, faceless Filipino athletes who continued to go against the grain and pushed their limits for the chance to one day fight for our flag and country. The message is clear. We as a nation, we need to treasure, nurture and embrace our athletes not only when they win, but more importantly during times when victory seems most out of reach. There is after all no such thing as instant gratification in sports. We need not look further than our neighboring ASEAN countries to realize this. Vietnam's rise in sports is the ideal narrative. Once an insignificant player even in Southeast Asia, they painstakingly rose from the ranks and finally broke ground and topped the Sea Games in two thousand and three and they have not looked back since. Now consistently named among the top three in the region, Vietnam brought home Olympic silvers in Taekwondo in two thousand and weightlifting in two thousand and eight and finally a gold in shooting in Rio, a day before Heidlin made her mark in history. Then there's Joseph Schooling of Singapore who bagged his nation's first-ever gold by outswimming Michael Phelps, the Olympics' most be-medaled athlete. With the right strategy, the commitment and the patience, we too, no matter how small, can reach greater heights like Miss Diaz did. It is timely and fortuitous that today the halls of Congress, both in the upper and lower chambers, are filled with individuals who either champion the athlete's cause or are champion athletes themselves. People's Champ Manny Pacquiao, now a senator, chairs the Senate Committee on Sports. Here in the lower house, we have among us Makati Congressman Monsur de Losario himself, an Olympian and Secretary General of the Philippine Taekwondo Association. One Pacman party list representative, Mikey Romero, whom we will hear from shortly, is a be-medaled national athlete in polo and trap shooting and is also a sports leader in basketball, baseball and cycling. Tagig representative, Piya Kayatano, an elite triathlete and former member of the Philippine volleyball team, continues to advocate for amateur and student athletes. continues to advocate for amateur and student athletes. Representative Manny Lopez of Manila headed the Amateur Boxing Association of the Philippines for many years, while Representatives Bambol Tolentino of Cavite and Prospero Pichay of Segregado del Sur remain at the helm of Philippine cycling and chess, respectively. The Party List, PBA, or Puesanambayang Atleta, fights staunchly for the welfare of athletes. As a former athlete, sportscaster, and avid sports fan, this representation is likewise committed to seeing our country's sports programs flourish. We all vow to prioritize sports, and we enjoin our colleagues to do the same. Various legislation is already in place. With RA 10699 already in effect, Ms. Diaz receives a five-billion peso cash incentive for her Olympic silver finish. And many more are in the offing. Among them, Bill seeking to create a Department of Sports to establish amateur sports training centers, to enact a Magna Carta for student athletes, to expand rewards and retirement benefits for Olympians, to create a coaching academy and to increase hours of physical education in schools. May Ms. Diaz's victory provide the impetus for more successes in the field of sports, not only in medal victories, which our country desperately craves, but also in policy and legislative reforms, which the nation badly needs. And so, airwoman first-class Diaz, brace yourself, because change is truly coming for you, through you, and because of you. Sinabi mo, Hidelin, na minsan ay nawalan ka ng tiwala sa sarili mo. Nagpapasalamat kami dahil sa kabila nito ay nagpasakang lumaban pa rin sa Rio. Kaya namnamin mo lahat ng papuri at biyayang iyong tinatamasa dahil lahat ito ay bunga ng iyong sakripisyo at pagpupursigi. Tularan ka sana ng mas marami pang kabataan sa iyong pagiging mabuting anak, sa pagmamahal mo sa bayan at sa iyong pananalig sa Diyos. Makakaasa ka, Hidelin, na ang sambayanan ay nasa likod mo patungo sa iyong inaasam na gintong medalya sa 2020 Tokyo Olympics. Mabuhay ka, Hidelin, at mula sa kaibutura ng aming mga puso, maraming-maraming salamat sa'yo. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, I move that Representative Michael Odilon L. Romero be recognized.
Representative Michael Odilon Romero is recognized.
Good afternoon, Mr. Speaker, members of Congress, distinguished sports leaders and guest of honor Olympic medalist Hidelin Diaz, and of course, to our PSC Chairman Butch Ramirez. I consider myself as one of the vanguards of Philippine sports, having served as NSA, or National Sports Association, president of both shooting and cycling. But as both an athlete and a sports leader, I would never trade my experience in 2012. I, together with now Congressman Manny Lopez and of course, former Congressman Monaco Puentabelia, led the 2012 London Olympics. We paraded, and guess who? Our flag bearer during this 2012 London Olympics. Our flag bearer was none other than Hidelin Diaz. In 2012, or during this 2012 London Olympics, she was just twenty-one years old. And at that stage in time, she had a very difficult time. And as what Congressman Celso Lobrigat said, she had a DNF, did not finish, meaning hindi ho siya, hindi ho niya natapos ang kanyang binubuhat. So that was four years ago. And with hard work, sheer perseverance, eto na po siya ngayon, nakatayo sa atin, no? If you think it is easy to win an Olympic medal, let me then give you a brief background on the Philippine sports and our country's quest for the very elusive Olympic medals. We started our Olympic campaign in 1924 with just one participant. Four years after, during the Amsterdam Olympics, our first Filipino swimmer, Teofilo Ildefonso, finished third in the 200-meter swimming. Four years after, in the LA Olympics, three Filipinos were awarded three bronze medals, making our country get four medals. In 1936, the Berlin Olympics, the Philippines won another bronze medal in hurdles, courtesy of Miguel White. And after independence from the United States, the country did not win any medal until almost thirty years after or during the 1964 Tokyo Olympics, wherein boxer Anthony Villanueva got our very first silver medal. Boxing would later bring all the remaining medals of the country, with Leopoldo Serantes winning bronze twenty-four years after or during the 1988 Seoul Olympics. In 1992, Barcelona Olympics, only boxer Ruel Velasco won a bronze medal. Four years later, in 1996 Atlanta Olympics, brother Onyok Velasco won our second silver medal. There would be no medal or another medal drought which lasted for twenty years or equivalent to five Summer Olympics. This drought, lucky for us, was broken this 2016 Rio Olympics by the first and only woman Olympic medalist in our country, the pride of Zamboanga, again, Hidelin Diaz, winning for our country its third silver medal two weeks ago. So, if you think it's easy to win an Olympic medal, let me tell you that from 1928 until today, 2016, the Philippines, or in ninety-two years, the Philippines has only won a total of ten Olympic medals, three silver and seven bronze medal. We only had eight Filipinos and one Filipina from ninety-two years until today to ever step in the podium of Olympic winners. I am very proud to say that out of the nine Filipino medalists from 1928, there is one that stands before us today in this August chamber, making us all proud and making this country very, very proud. The first silver medalist, the first female silver medalist, and again, coming from, of course, uso ngayon, Mindanao, Hidelin Diaz. So, I just want to say that her achievement for us in Philippine sports is a big rally, is a big rallying point. And her achievements should be what all Philippine sports should be looking up to. She is a real heroine, and I think in 2020 Olympics, she would definitely go for gold and get that very, very elusive gold medal, tama ba? So she's just twenty-five years old. At twenty-nine, she might just use, she might just do it. So, I present to you again, please give a round of applause again to Ms. Hidelin Diaz, our first female Olympian, Olympic medalist.
Mr. Speaker, finally, I move that Representative Manny Lopez be recognized for his manifestation.
Representative Manny Lopez is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, Majority Floor Leader, fellow colleagues in the Seventeenth Congress, my friends from Philippine sports, especially the Chairman of the Philippine Sports Commission, William Butch Ramirez. Mga kababayan ko, isang magandang gabi po sa inyong lahat. Nung Agosto 8 po, ang inyong pong abang lingkod delivered a privileged speech. I already mentioned and spoke about what I wanted to say. Pero kung ano pa manho, ang tinatamasa ni Hidelin Diaz, ngayong araw na ito, sa pagbibigay ng puri karangalan sa sambayan ng Filipino, ay hindi po nangyari ng isang saglit lang. Saksi po ako, nung 2008 Beijing Olympics, nung ako po ang nagre-representa ng ating pong kopunan sa amateur boxing, si Hidelin Diaz ay lumahok. At sa sinamampalad, marail, hindi inyo pa siya nababalitaan nun, ay umue ng luwan itong si Hidelin Diaz. Kami po ay sumubok minsan pa doon sa tinatawag nating London Olympic Games four years ago. At mas masakit po ang tinamasa ng ating kababayan hanggang sa punto po na siya ay aayaw na. Ang karamihan po ng mga namamahala ng palakasan, dito po sa Pilipinas, binabaliwala ang ating mga atleta. Inuulit ko po, binabaliwala dahil si Hidelin po ang makapagsasabi sa atin dito na ang kanya pong pinagmulan na alawans na kwarenta mil kada buwan na nararapat lamang na bigay sa isang Olympian ay binaba po sa walong libo. Walong libo po. Yampu ba ay nararapat para sa isang atleta na nagre-representa ng ating inang bayan? Marail ang sagot ng karamihan sa atin, hindi po. Kaya po tinihikayat ko, ito pong mababang kapuluhan na sana po naman maawa po tayo sa mga manlalarong atleta. Ako po ay saksi rito, 1996, nung ang aming pong boksingero, ang ating boksingero na si Onyok Velasco, 1996 nagkamit ng gitnang pilak na medalya, ay pinangakuhan po at pinasa nitong mababang kapuluhan ng added incentive. Pumasapuyan dito under then Speaker Joe DiVinesia, subalit nung dumating po sa mataas na kapuluhan sa pangunguna ng Biyanan po ng ating kasamaan na si Aboyet at Alexandria Gonzalez ay medyo nagkaproblema po. So, to make a long story short, we should support all our athletes, and I think the mere fact that Hidelin's silver medal, that occurs every other twenty years, happens only once in a blue moon, should never be forgotten by this August body. And I call upon you, my fellow members, especially those involved in Philippine sports, that we should try and change the system, these kalawags, the badigs that has been prevailing in Philippine sports, that has been the cause of the demise of our Philippine sports. Magandang habang po sa inyong lahat, at pinupuri ko po muli, at mabuhay ang ating pong Hidelin Diaz. Mabuhay po ang bayang Pilipinas.
Mr. Speaker, may request that our honorary Ms. Hidelin Diaz be invited to the rostrum to receive the Congressional Medal of Distinction conferred upon her by the House of Representatives, together with copies of House Resolution Number Eight and House Resolution Number Nine. Mr. Speaker, also as a sign of appreciation and recognition for her outstanding performance in the Olympics and for her unceasing dedication to the sport of weightlifting, the members of the House have contributed among themselves the amount of one and a half million pesos to be awarded to Ms. Hidelin Diaz. Mr. Speaker, I move that the Secretary General be directed to read the title and text of House Resolution Number Nine.
We welcome and invite Ms. Hidelin Diaz to proceed to the rostrum to be accompanied by Mr. William Butch Ramirez, Chairperson of the Philippine Sports Commission, Mr. Albert Attilano, Senior Vice President and Chairman of the Technical Committee for Training of the National Team and Team Manager for the Rio Olympic Games of the Philippine Weightlifting Association, Inc., and Mr. Alfoncito Aldanete, Technical Head Coach of the Philippine Weightlifting Association, Inc. The Secretary General is directed to read the title and text of House Resolution Number Nine.
House Resolution Number Nine, Resolution Confering the Congressional Medal of Distinction to Ms. Hidelin F. Diaz for winning the silver medal in the women's weightlifting fifty-three-kilogram category in the 2016 Rio de Janeiro Summer Olympic Games. Whereas in the 2016 Rio de Janeiro Summer Olympic Games, Ms. Hidelin F. Diaz participated and won the silver medal in the women's weightlifting fifty-three-kilogram category. Whereas Ms. Diaz's silver medal is the first silver medal worn by a female Filipino athlete in the Olympic Games. Whereas Ms. Diaz's win ended the twenty-year medal drought of the Philippines in the Olympic Games. Whereas throughout the competition and in her winning the silver medal, Ms. Diaz has shown and proven that the Filipino athlete is world-class and capable of competing in international level. Whereas Ms. Diaz is a source of pride and inspiration to the Filipino people and is truly worthy of praise and emulation, especially for the youth. Now therefore, be it resolved, as it is hereby resolved by the House of Representatives, to confer the Congressional Medal of Distinction to Ms. Hidelin F. Diaz for winning the silver medal in the 2016 Rio de Janeiro Summer Olympic Games. Resolve further that a copy of this resolution be furnished Ms. Hidelin F. Diaz. Please accept the cash given by the members of the House of Representatives in the amount of one million five hundred thousand pesos.
Mr. Speaker, in order to allow our members to meet and extend their greetings to our distinguished guests, I move that we suspend our session for a few minutes. So move, Mr. Speaker, your honor.
Session is suspended. Session is resumed.
Mr. Speaker, I rise on a point of personal and collective privilege regarding the election of the Majority Leader and the Minority Leader and the Speaker.
The Honorable Majority Leader Attorney Rodolfo C. Farías of the First District of Ilocos Norte is recognized. You have the floor, Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there has been a lot of questions raised regarding the position of Minority Leader. It happened days after our opening session and the point of contention now is whether we follow tradition or we follow the rules. Those who are invoking that Representative Bagilat is the duly-elected Minority Leader claim to have tradition and customs and usage under part. But let me state the basis of their claim. We will flash to you, Mr. Speaker, for the guidance of all concerned and future congresses how the selection or election of Minority Leader has evolved. In the 13th Congress, we will show you a matrix of how this selection has evolved. In the 13th Congress, it was specifically stated in Rule 7 as to how the Majority Leader and Minority Leader are elected and the Speaker. Under Section 7, it says, "Those who voted for the winning candidate for Speaker shall constitute the majority in the House and they shall elect from among themselves the Majority Leader who shall, who can be changed only by a majority vote of all the majority members at any time." In the second paragraph, Mr. Speaker, it says expressly, "Those who voted for the losing candidate for Speaker shall constitute the minority in the House. The member who garners the second highest number of votes for the position of Speaker shall assume the position of Minority Leader and he slash she can be changed only by a majority vote of all the minority members." Third paragraph, it says, "In case two or more losing candidates obtain the same second highest number of votes for the position of Speaker, a runoff election will be held among the minority members to determine through a majority vote thereof who among those who so obtained the same second highest number of votes shall be the Minority Leader." So it was very clear in the 13th Congress that the runner-up becomes the Minority Leader. And in the 13th Congress, those, the candidates for Speaker were Jose de Venezuela Jr., Francis Escudero, Hacinto Parás, and Ronaldo Zamora. So pursuant to that rule, the second Francis Escudero became Minority Leader. Maybe flash the rules again, please. So thi- this is the matrix. Then in the 14th Congress, they abandoned that rule. Effective the 14th Congress, but during that election of the 14th Congress, they adapted provisionally the rules of the 13th Congress where that particular paragraph about a runner-up becoming the Minority Leader was part of the rules. But in the 14th Congress, there was only one candidate for Speaker. It was Jose de Venezuela. So in the 14th Congress, they discarded that runner-up becoming the Minority Leader and adopted this rule. It says there, the matrix, there are bold portions. Let us just limit ourselves to the particular and relevant provision. It says, "The Minority Leader shall be elected by the members of the minority and can be changed by a majority vote of all the minority members at any time." The first paragraph is a carryover for what, ah up to now that we have adopted. It says there, "Members who vote for the winning candidate for Speaker shall constitute the majority in the House and they shall elect from among themselves the Majority Leader. The Majority Leader may be changed by a majority vote of the majority members at any time." So why do you think that they changed this? Rightfully, Mr. Speaker, because from the Constitution itself, Section 16 of Article 6 of the Constitution, it provides, under Paragraph 1, "The Senate shall elect its president and the House of Representatives its speaker by a majority vote of all its respective members." The second paragraph says of the Constitution, "Its House shall choose such other officers as it may deem necessary." Under our jurisdiction, Mr. Speaker, we select or elect our leaders. So in this case, rightfully, we elected the Speaker and whoever wins becomes the Speaker, naturally. And those in the majority should, should elect their Majority Leader. And those in the minority should also elect their Minority Leader. Otherwise, that old rule that has been discarded makes a loser a winner. You, you did not elect the Majority, the Minority Leader. By that antiquated rule which has been thrown out, the losing candidate becomes a leader. How can a leader be the one who lost an election? We choose our leaders and leaders are elected by the sovereignty people, whoever they are. In this case, the minority should really elect their Minority Leader. So in the 15th Congress, 16th Congress, the same rule has been adopted that we elect our Majority Leader and the minority elect their Minority Leader. Now, unfortunately, in the 15th and 16th Congress, the rule was not followed. The, the rule was violated and whoever was the losing, next losing candidate to the Speaker, they adopted as the Minority Leader. But that was a violation of the rule. Even in the 15th Congress, it violated the rules of the 14th Congress which was provisionally adopted. Same thing in the 16th Congress, but nobody objected. Now in the 17th Congress, we provisionally adopted the rules of the 16th Congress which have been the same in the 14th, 15th, and 16th. And fortunately, a stickler for the rules, the honorable Representative Lito Achenza stood on the floor and clarified, "How will we determine the Minority Leader?" And the Speaker asked the temporary Majority Leader to answer and I cited this specific rule and this is the rule, that whoever elects or votes for the winning candidate for Speaker will be the majority. And those who did not vote, whether they voted for another candidate or did not vote at all, will become the minority and they will elect their leader. That was the categorical answer given by the acting or temporary Majority Leader and nobody objected. Otherwise, they should have stood and claimed that we have to follow tradition because by tradition, whoever is the second candidate garnering, the losing candidate with the highest number of votes should be Minority Leader. They never questioned that. And in fact, gentleman, one gentleman had claimed that it was only an opinion by one who was not even elected as Majority Leader but temporary Majority Leader or acting Majority Leader. But, Mr. Speaker, the opinion of the acting Majority Leader was sought by the Chair and the Chair adopted the opinion of this acting floor leader and the body adopted. And, Mr. Speaker, ah, the, this representation happened to be the Chairman of the Rules Rewriting Committee in the 15th Congress. So contemporaneous interpretation or opinion given specially by Ad hoc Committee on Rules Rewriting. I was the Chairman of the Committee that wrote the rules in the 15th Congress. So I know the rules and so I beg our colleagues that they should see light as it is. They claim that they will go to the Supreme Court, Mr. Speaker, but I'm already telling them they will lose in the Supreme Court. Because what will be their cause of action in the Supreme Court is they will ask the help of the Supreme Court through certiorari. And certiorari is only available when there is no plain, adequate, or speedy remedy available. There is plain, adequate, and speedy remedy available here by throwing the question to the body and the body will decide. But, Mr. Speaker, how can one go to the Supreme Court and ask for socor or help of the Supreme Court and say, "Mr. Supreme Court, Mr. Justices, pambihira. Yung Congress, nung nakaranin, hindi naman sinusunod ang rules. Eh ngayon, sinunod nila 'yung rule. Eh ayaw namin sundin 'yung rule. Ang gusto namin 'yung pinalitan na o 'yung lumang ugali na hindi sumusunod sa rules. Kaya tulungan po niyo kami." Do you think the Supreme Court would even listen to them if their claim or cause of action is, "We followed the rule" instead of following tradition, albeit a thrown-away old rule? That rule has been thrown away, but if they want to go challenge, I beg them, join us. You're welcome to join the majority. I don't speak for the minority. I hope the minority will also welcome them. But this is where their off-coated paragraph will come into play. Now, the day after the election, it was manifested on the floor that the, those who did not vote for the winning candidate constituted themselves as minority and invited everybody, including the aide, to join in the election of Minority Leader. But they did not, they did not participate. They should have gone there and participated. But now, they want to say and lay claim to title of Minority Leader by a discarded rule. So if they go there, Mr. Speaker, and the Supreme Court will say that we were wrong, I will resign as Chairman of the Committee on Rules. And nakakahiya naman, nagbigay ako ng opinion dito na mali-mali pala. But if we will be upheld by the Supreme Court, we will still welcome them to join the majority. The aide are welcome to join the majority. I see that their brethren in the Liberal Party are with us already, including our Deputy Speaker here, who is the head of the Liberal Party, being the Deputy Speaker. Ah, maybe we can all be together and we will welcome them in the majority, Mr. Speaker. So I hope this will make it very clear as to what happened. This Congress, the 17th Congress, only adopted the rule as it is clearly stated. Again, I state, ours is a sovereign republican government where sovereignty resides in the people and all government authority emanates from them. Nobody can hold public office if the people do not give their mandate, albeit a Minority Leader. One cannot be a Minority Leader by default or by losing. It is very clear, Mr. Speaker, on the record that Representative Bagilat never ran for the office of Minority Leader. He wanted to be Speaker. In fact, I am wondering why they nominated him as a candidate for Speaker when all they wanted was to be Minority Leader. Then the Honorable Alvarez should have been unopposed as Majority Leader and then they could have gathered together and elect their Minority Leader. But Representative Bagilat, on the record, ran for the office of Speaker and pursuant, pursuant to our rules, he cannot be the Minority Leader because very clear, as I have shown you in the fourth past, three past congresses, that the minority shall elect their Minority Leader and this is provided for by the Constitution, that the House, the respective House, shall choose their other officers, be it Minority Leader, be it Majority Leader, be it a Chairman of every committee, they should be elected by the House. As we are doing right now, Mr. Speaker, even memberships, even vice chairpersons, they are elected or chosen by the House. Nobody can become or hold any public office without a mandate from whoever they claim to be serving of. So, Mr. Speaker, thank you and I hope this will clarify the matter.
Unless there are any other members who wishes to interpolate, normally we will not, ah, it is prohibited to actually, ah, do an applause, but I will excuse our members considering the erudite opinion of the Majority Leader. Mr. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we refer the speech of the Honorable Majority Floor Leader to the Committee on Rules. So move, Mr. Speaker, your honor.
The privilege speech and legal treaties and the position of the House of Representatives is hereby referred to the Committee on Rules.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we adjourn till Monday, August 29, 4:00 in the afternoon. So move, Mr. Speaker, your honor.
There is, the motion has not yet been approved.
Mr. Speaker, before that, may I just make an announcement for the benefit of everybody? Effective Monday, by the instructions of the Speaker and upon agreement in the Committee on Rules, roll calls will be conducted every session day. Every session day, there will be roll call. So para alam ko ng mga miyembro, araw-araw po, magkakaroon na tayo ng roll call dito po sa House of Representatives.
Mr. Speaker, we would like to correct the... What is the pleasure of the Honorable...
We are not reporting on Monday, Mr. Speaker. It's a holiday, so we will, we will resume on Tuesday.
The Majority Leader is about to make a clarification.
Correction accepted, Mr. Speaker, your honor. And I apologize for the error. I move that we suspend till Tuesday, August the 30th.
Thank you.
4 o'clock in the afternoon. So move, Mr. Speaker, your honor.
Do we suspend or do we adjourn? I did not hear it clearly.
Adjourn, Mr. Speaker, your honor.
Adjourn until...
Tuesday.
Hearing no objection, session is adjourned until Tuesday and everybody is advised to do your bread and butter service to the country. and everybody is advised to do your bread and butter service to the country.